Not a great atmosphere.
I will speak in order of the Attleboro School Committee. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're here tonight to talk about the superintendent search and how it's proceeding. But first, I would just like to read a brief letter pertaining to some recent events. It just reads, "Dear fellow school committee members, in reviewing record committee meetings minutes and supporting audio and visual recordings, it is clear to me that certain members of the Attleboro School Committee are utilizing these meetings as a place to advance their own personal agendas. All meetings of the school committee should have only one focus, and that is to continue to evaluate and support the district's operational needs. The recent negative feedback that has been reported to my attention clearly indicates we, as a committee, are losing this focus. I ask all of you to pose aside your own personal feelings and agendas and act in the best interest of the school, community, and citizens we've duly elected to serve. The committee is currently undertaking the process of searching for and hiring our next superintendent of schools, and this negative feedback may have a direct impact on the number and quality of applicants who wish to apply for the position. The students, teachers, support staff, and families of Attleboro are counting on this committee to perform our duties in the best of our abilities and in a professional manner. I have always been proud of the amount of dedication this committee has shown in dealing with all the school district's demands in our first year as superintendent. There are many examples to date of committee members being in the minority on a particular vote but willing to work collaboratively on implementing the vote's intent. We, as a committee, have to revert back to displaying professional and dedicated focus for the school district to continue to build on its recent achievements. In closing, I must add that all the statements I have referred to in this letter are based upon our board governance policy." Again, I thank you for allowing me to read that, and let's just move forward with the important work that we have to do tonight. Now, the work that we are here for tonight, three basic principles, if you will. We're going to talk about what the community has told us in the thirty-something focus groups that we have had around, and what that report entails. The second part is going to be basically trying to come up with what that job description would look like. And thirdly, how we are going to advertise for this position. That'll be something that the committee will have to make a decision on the finances of doing so. So first, I think, you know, we do need to recognize that, you know, this is a quite extensive book of focus groups. It was a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication on a number of school committee members, and especially Mr. Murphy for putting it all together for us. So I'm going to pass it over to Dave to talk about the first part of this, and this is the focus group and interview reports and basically some type of consent document we may want to entail later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee members have in front of you tonight two separate documents. First is this spiral-bound book, which is the focus group report contemplated by the school committee approved superintendent search process. When we detailed the plan on September 24th of trying to provide an inclusive process that would solicit as much community feedback as possible, community, again, being used in the broadest sense possible, both in terms of the city of Attleboro and the Attleboro School District, we talked about each meeting that was held would produce a focus group report which would essentially detail everything that was reported by the participants. This is raw data in every sense of the word. It's essentially a transcription of everything that was said, good, the bad, and the ugly. There are some words that are misspelled, there are others that are butchered, and, as I said, it's raw data coming from the two-hundred-some individuals who participated in focus groups, and then certain individuals who sat for interviews in order to have their feedback included. Those would be essentially administrators in the school system. There were focus groups held at each building, both for families and staff. There were a number of community focus groups held. Special education parent action, the Attleboro Special Education Parent Action Council was one. The early education, I'm gonna mess this one up again, the Early Childhood Council of Attleboro, and a number of others that are detailed in this. This booklet is for community members and members of the public who wish to review. Again, it's just a transcription, and it will help in synthesizing all the information we have as part of our research efforts to go into the comprehensive assessment which is contemplated by the superintendent search process. There is one adjustment with regard to the timetable. Initially, we had hoped that the report, the consensus document the chairman was referring to, would come out in December. Given the volume of information that we've obtained, the slight adjustment is that we have a document of preliminary findings for committee members and the public to review now. It's essentially a much, much shorter version of this. This is one hundred and six pages, this is eleven. And then from this will come the comprehensive assessment in January. So what I've asked is that committee members who have comments on focus group reports or preliminary findings to direct those thoughts and comments to the chairman by January 1st, and my hope would be that we'd be able to incorporate everybody's thoughts and feedback into the report that will come out in January. So turning to the preliminary findings, and there is a PowerPoint set up, so we can, if you want to, we can go to that. That way, people at home can follow along. In the first slide, we asked, "What information did we obtain?" And these are three questions that people throughout the community have heard often over the last, they've been worded in different ways, in different surveys and questionnaires, and at the focus groups, obviously. But the three principal questions of the research phase, what are we doing well? An important question, thank you, an important question for any search process, as we transition from one superintendent to another, we want to make sure that we maintain areas that we've seen progress and things that we're doing well. We don't see change simply because we have a new superintendent. The second question, what challenges will we confront in the coming years? This question incorporating both challenges that we will face during any superintendent transition during any time period, frankly, but also ones that are specific to the time period in which we find ourselves. And finally, the characteristics and attributes that we, as a community, are looking for in the next superintendent. Why did we obtain this information? As we just said, to synthesize all the information, put it into a comprehensive assessment, and this is the sort of, an introductory booklet for our candidate pool as part of the superintendent search. Next question, how did we obtain this information? First, the focus groups, as I said, over two hundred individuals participating in family, community, and staff meetings, as well as interviews. Continuing on, the surveys, which we are enormously grateful for all the staff members and families who participated in the superintendent search via the survey process. Those were administered both in hard copy and electronically. The results are currently being tabulated, and I would anticipate that we would be able to have a summary of those survey results before the actual comprehensive assessment. I don't think there'd be any reason we'd have to wait until January for those, so we'll be making those available in the coming weeks, I would imagine. Moving on, the, as you'll see, as you look through the focus group reports and the preliminary findings, we've been able to cobble together what I've dubbed a working thesis. And certainly, this is a thesis that can be adjusted and modified as we go through the process and have members have the opportunity to really sort of digest the information we obtained. But it's two sentences, and again, this is one hundred and six pages, the preliminary findings document is eleven, this is two sentences. So if you really just need a nutshell of what's in these, this is how I would classify it. "In recent years, the Attleboro School District has enjoyed substantial progress in student achievement by embracing a vision of high expectations and high standards. In order to sustain this momentum and build upon that progress, the new superintendent of schools must reaffirm and cultivate a culture of collaboration and empowerment amongst students, staff, and families." This working thesis recognizes the progress that we've enjoyed in the district, and it was a broad consensus throughout the people that we met with about that progress. The second sentence is not an indictment on our current culture, but frankly, it is an acknowledgement that in order to, again, sustain and build upon that progress, there are adjustments that need to be made. And I believe that is incorporated into that thesis. Moving on to just some of the bullet points, and again, in one hundred and six pages, there's a lot of things that people reported they feel as though we are doing well, but just some of them, the trajectory of the student performance that we've certainly seen in a number of pieces of evidence, the narrowing of many achievement gaps, the enthusiasm and dedication amongst staff and the building-based morale. There's, there are a lot of reaffirming experiences when you have the opportunity to meet with people in Attleboro about the school system, but the level of dedication amongst staff members to their students and to the student's futures is certainly one of the most reaffirming experiences I think any of us could really ask for. And certainly, the amount of building-based morale, that was, I thought, one of the more unique experiences of meeting with these groups, is that whatever building you were in, that was the building that they would say, "This is the greatest school building in Attleboro, this is the greatest school building maybe in Massachusetts." If you're a Hill Roberts family member, I see Mr. Parent nodding, does the Hill, exactly, the Hill Roberts pride, Thatcher pride, St. Louis, and so on and so forth. The array of programming, and this really sort of encompasses a lot of what people talked about, the, just sort of the diversity of programs and services that are offered, and that ranges everywhere from special education to the early childhood program. Again, I'll just throw in a quick anecdote. The number of individuals who spoke in a positive way about the early learning center who did not currently have children in the early learning center, I think really attests to the quality of that program and to the dedication of the people who worked there. If you're sending your child every day to ELC, that's one thing, you certainly can understand why someone would speak so highly of it. But we had people who, children, youngest children are in either late in middle school or in high school, talking about how great the ELC was in Attleboro, and I think that really began a test to what a quality program that is. Belief in the vision, again, talking about the degree to which people hold themselves up to high standards and high expectations. The nurturing environment, students are welcomed in on a daily basis. The constructive relationship with the municipal government, this was one, if you review some of the notes from the focus groups in 2005, the last time Attleboro engaged in a superintendent search, you saw that one of the things that people spoke about, that they needed more of, was a constructive relationship between the municipal government and the school department. And now, when you go around and you talk to people, you talk, they talk about how we need to maintain that constructive relationship between the school department and the municipal government. Certainly, there's a lot of gratitude and credit to go around, both in the school department and in City Hall, for that improvement. The implementation of the evaluation tool, it's one that has been talked a lot about at this table, but it's sort of a normandy of the implementation of that, and the fact that Attleboro, being an early adopter, is in such a good place at the state level, was certainly something that people appreciated. Moving on to one of the more popular topics in the focus groups, the challenges and things that participants would like to see improvements in, in one way or another. This is not in a, I wouldn't say that this is in a particular order, but there's probably something to be said for the number of, the order in which these are currently assembled. The culture of collaboration and empowerment that needs to be affirmed, cultivated, and exhibited by the new superintendent, an expectation that many people in the community spoke of. Technology, and again, there's been a lot of, oh, excuse me, thank you. The technology and the need to develop and implement a technology vision for the school district that really gives all students as many educational benefits as the technology can yield. Staffing, staffing from a sort of a global perspective and understanding the implications of having appropriate staffing, that's both in the administrative ranks and the teaching ranks. The perception gap, which is one that was talked about, every, again, every single group, the discrepancy between the quality of services and programs being offered in the Attleboro School District and the perception of what those programs and services really offer, both in and outside of the community. The governing relationship between the administration and the school committee, certainly, we could not produce a report talking about the Attleboro School District and not talk about the governing body of that school district and some of the challenges that we've encountered over the years. The need for well-roundedness, creativity, and a love of learning. Sounds somewhat abstract, but again, it's one that people talk often about, about how we need to make sure that as we push our students to achieve, we do so in the effort of cultivating a well-rounded student body. The preparedness for success as graduates and not just as students, again, that's sort of a somewhat long way of saying, "We need to make sure that we measure our achievement not just in test scores, but on the degree to which our students are prepared for all the challenges that life will throw at them." And the changing composition of the school district and the student body, again, one that we've talked about at length at this table, and how those demographics are shifting, and how we need, as a school district, need to make sure that our services are shifting along with them. The, you may have gone, did we go one ahead?
Yeah, you were ahead.
You're ahead of yourself. Sorry. The need to value all subject areas for their intrinsic value. The need to ensure that the physical parents of school buildings is one that's aesthetically pleasing and conducive to educational exploration, and again, you'll see in bold there, that does include Attleboro High School. Attleboro High School has to look as welcoming as our other buildings, and that is a challenge that this district faces. The need to adapt to the evolving landscape of state and federal assessments. We know, of course, in the coming years that MCAS will presumably give way to other assessments. We've seen a lot of success in our MCAS scores. Whatever the next challenge is, we need to make sure that our district moves along with those assessments. Emotional and behavioral services, which is a specific area that was identified throughout the process, is one that we need to make sure that we have everything that our students need with regard to that. Making sure that we promote success stories, sort of an offshoot of the perception gap elimination goal that we'll ask of this next superintendent, but finding a way to sort of market ourselves in a way that people understand how well our students are doing. Again, maintaining the collaborative relationship with the municipal government. And finally, the need to dedicate ourselves to being innovative and always beneficial to students, particularly with regard to finding new avenues of funding. Again, that's a challenge that we face any year at any time, any school district faces it, but one that we certainly want to ask of our new educational leader. Throughout the groups and the surveys, we asked participants to talk about adjectives or traits or attributes that we would like to associate with our next superintendent. Here are one hundred. I will not read all of them, but they will be, they are in the document if anyone would like to peruse the one hundred. Characteristics, attributes, or adjectives that we would like to associate with our next superintendent. I'll name just a few. Approachable, cognitively flexible, which I think was actually a new phrase that has been coined in this process. Collaborative, committed, communicative, courageous, decisive, diplomatic, empathetic, empowering, integrity, invested, motivational, passionate, positive, respectful, supportive, thoughtful, and visionary. Again, one participant dubbed this "God on a Good Day," which may sound ambitious, but we are an ambitious school district, so we certainly don't want to be shy about how much we will expect of our next superintendent. Finally, in terms of what happened next, the preliminary findings will be released to the public. They just were, so we can check that one off. Again, I would ask that the members who have thoughts or comments that we'd like incorporated into the comprehensive assessment be directed to the chairman over the next three weeks or so, and that should put us on track to have the comprehensive assessment assembled and issued to the public in January. The school committee determinations that would be made tonight with regard to posting and advertising, and again, the report should be due out in January. So that is the preliminary findings of Phase One, the research and report phase of the superintendent search process. These documents are public, they, again, it is raw material, particularly the focus group reports, so if there are, if any of it is a little discombobulated, I would accept responsibility for that, and I apologize. But essentially, it's an information grab of everything that the community has hoped for us in terms of the community's priorities, concerns, and hopes for our school district moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Does anybody from the committee want to briefly share any of their thoughts on the focus group they attended, that maybe there's something that wasn't said, tried out, or, I mean, I would still appreciate it in writing, so it can be put into the, to the document, but if anybody would like to share it this time before we move on to the job advertisement. Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
I would like to state for the record to my constituents that due to hospitalization and doctor's orders, I could not attend the focus groups, but I did respond to every email and phone call that I received, anything from the question board, and I just didn't give them to you back. But unfortunately, I was not able to attend the focus groups.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, we're gonna close that. Again, thank you, Dave, I appreciate all the hard work on that. We're going to move on now. This, what we have in front of us is just a basic job description, it was basically from the MASC, very generic, but we want to make sure that we have something that fits Attleboro. So I know we haven't had much time to look at it, but if we want to continue with our prospective deadline and going out to advertise sometime before the Christmas break and holding that open for roughly a month, we do have to get working on it. And so, I know Brenda's been circling a couple of things over here, and I know a couple of other people have looked at it. Do we have any major questions or concerns or things that they think they're adjusting in this?
I have one quick question. Which, the job description approved by the school committee in '09, or this one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Put mine down with the other.
He knows it by heart.
Which one do you have, the new one?
I have them both.
So they're two different things, right? The chairman has, the chairman has directed our attention to the superintendent job description, not the advertisement, so.
This is what we're talking about.
They are two separate things with two separate functions that should be.
Thank you. I don't have the other one, I don't have the other one. Oh.
Which one do you have?
Okay, so why don't we just open up the comments about, with the job description, any type of changes we want to see be made in this, or potential changes?
So which one do we decide to use?
They are two separate functions.
I do have some, but I mean, I'm just kind of, I have for underqualifications, because that's our older one, this is, I guess, going to be our newer one. Is that what we're doing, Mr. Chia?
Yes, we're actually, because the job description is going to have to match the advertisement.
But the documents too have two separate functions. We just want them to be consistent.
Well, underqualifications, I think it's definite that we need something in there like an "I" for hiring qualified staff and qualified administrators. I think that's a big one that needs to be added for the qualifications. And like I said, these are just bullet points that I was trying to put into what we had here. I didn't see that. I was kind of looking at the other job description.
Okay, so again, what would you like to see into that?
Well, I'm just looking, that it has like an "I" for hiring qualified staff and administrators. We need someone that, that we can hire qualified staff and administrators to make sure that, like, they have, you know, experience or the "I" for that, the, I mean, I see experi, you know, I'm just kind of.
Like experience in hiring, I'm successful, like in the past.
Right, qualified, successful administrators or staff. I don't know where to put it in. I mean, like I said, I'm just putting bullet points and trying to see, I mean, it's just brought, I just started tonight, so I'm trying to, and I think we're, oh, sorry.
Wait, so you're looking at this one?
Yeah, that's the one we're looking at. Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were looking at the job description. This is the advertisement.
Yeah, it was, well, it kind of has to match it, right? Is that what we're trying to do?
She's saying, she wants to incorporate.
Right.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out which one we're talking about. You're talking about this one.
I was looking at this one because it looks like this was a new one that was kind of.
The advertisement.
Right, that was, right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But it needs to be.
Mr. Chairman, they are, I fully agree that we want consistency. The advertisement is not going to incorporate everything that would be in the job description. I think to Mr. Furtado's point, I certainly think a bullet point could be added under job goals that, to talk about the goal of developing and retaining a highly qualified educational or administrative staff. I don't have any objection to something to that effect being included in the advertisement as well, but I think under job, the qualifications really speak to the person, the individual candidate's credentials. The job goals would be where I would think that, that point, a very valid one could be incorporated.
Okay. Yeah, so let's stick to the first one first, that job description for the superintendent of schools.
Yeah.
That will, in, like, I understand, we're trying to do like an overview when we post of what we're looking for, but we, I think the main thing that we're looking for would be this. I mean, some districts say ours does not, that the superintendent has to have a PhD. Now, that opens the pool up. I mean, ours, we cannot say ours has to have an advanced study above a master's degree with a doctorate preferable, preferred. So that's, we're looking at words like that. If we want something in this job description changed, and the only reason we're doing both at once is we have to basically change this job description and policy before we're able to hire this person on, so they can match that job description. So again, go ahead.
May I suggest we just start running down them one through five, see if people agree or disagree with that, and then go on to additions from there, and just focus on the qualifications, that way we could maybe hammer down one section, then move on. My suggestion.
Yeah.
So, oh, I mean, who wants to read number one for the bill, take turns reading it. Number one, certified or eligible for certification as superintendent of school Massachusetts.
No objections.
No one objects to that? We want someone certified to be a superintendent in Massachusetts, right?
Well, it says, "or eligible." I mean.
That's a good point.
My feeling is that we should keep that in there, because a lot of people who are highly qualified haven't yet completed the certification process. The certification process is really drawn out and kind of a pain to finish.
My personal opinion, if they lived in Mass, I'd want them to be certified in Mass. They come from somewhere else, I can understand that, though.
Yeah.
Good point, good point.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Mr. Parent's plan is a good one. I think that the one thing we want to keep in mind is that, at this very early stage, we want as wide a pool as possible. We, as the hiring party, have the discretion to narrow that pool. For instance, we may decide that out of the twenty candidates, there are twelve who are currently licensed and, you know, are the preferable over the eight, who are only eligible. So I think that we're at a stage where we want, it's sort of, you think of it as sort of a funnel, we're at the sort of top of it at the moment. So I, I agree. Do we want to go through bullet points, or do we say, are there, are there any objections to the qualifications, because they are fairly broad?
Yeah, take a section at a time.
The only one I have is I prefer, I prefer a doctorate only. That's my personal opinion.
What was that?
I prefer a doctorate only. I prefer that.
Oh, instead.
I would like to call my superintendent a doctor, so, so, that's my preference, but I don't think that's a general consensus.
Well, may I respond?
Doctorate only?
I, that's mine, my preference.
You're talking about that as a minimum requirement?
Already certified and.
Yes, I'd want a doctorate, it was actually, I could see the non-certification, they're coming from another state, but my personal preference, I prefer a doctorate only.
I concur with that, that it's, I do have a preference for a doctor, but I would be, I would be hesitant to change the qualification at the moment, only because it would, I mean, in a, it would be an unfortunate scenario where none of the candidate, preferred candidates, well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I think that would be presupposed, but I don't want to say that it would be an unfortunate scenario, but if we, if we make it doctorate only now, I mean, again, we are gonna, that is, we are changing a variable that will result in a reduction of the size of the pool. I, I completely agree that the preference is the doctorate, but I think that that is articulated in it, in this, so I just.
Yeah, I do believe of being the minority on that one. I want doctorate only, but I don't think.
Well, I mean, again, I don't think, I'm not sure you will at a later stage, because I think the preference is pretty broad, that.
I'm right here in the qualifications.
Yep, no, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to, you know, say, when Glenn Kooch came in and talked to us, he kind of made the point, the executive director of the MASC is to keep it broad until you get down to your finalists, not your finalists, but your end candidates, if you were, your fifteen or twenty people, and then you can start using the school committee's discretion about which ones that you want to bring forward. I mean, I can think what his point was, maybe you don't want to miss that potential diamond in the rough who has every other thing that you're looking for in a superintendent except one little thing that you mandated be on there, and then lose that individual because of that, so, just something, something to keep in mind. Because wasn't the job description given to everybody?
That's right.
Yeah, this was in our packet.
This was in a packet, this was not.
This was not, right, I just wanted to make sure the job description was, that's what, that's what I'm saying. So when, and it was updated, I think, if everybody knows, if you read on the back, it was only like three years ago.
It says, 2009.
Right, right, so there was a lot of adjustments made during that time on that policy, I remember that very well. Right, right. So, there was a lot of adjustments made during that time on that policy. I remember that very well.
I mean, I, to Mr. Fertado's point, I really do think we could add a bullet point with regard to the need to exhibit good judgment with regard to hiring. Hiring the principals in particular and other administrators really are the most important decisions that a superintendent makes. And so, I certainly think that our description could or should incorporate that. In terms of drafting it right now, in sort of real time, I mean, we could, we could just, unless there are anyone, anyone has an objection to that being incorporated into it, we could just say that we are gonna, we're going to incorporate another bullet point, and that will be brought forth at a later meeting. I think it's, I think it's a good goal. I think it's one that we should, we should pursue. I'm just not sure, and I don't know that we need to do it right now.
Okay, so if we move on to the job description document, because we should be able to make some changes, isn't it? Go ahead, Fred, I'm sorry.
I would prefer a doctorate, too, actually.
You prefer a doctorate or not?
But I think that if you leave that to the end, and then when you're screening them, if there was someone that didn't have the doctorate, but had a lot of other good qualifications, and was eligible to eventually get a doctorate, I think that would be something to consider, too.
Barbara?
I was just thinking that maybe two under the job goals, having something in there, something about maybe having some experience, lengthy experience or in-depth experience with special education and ELL, because we do have a very large population that a lot of other districts don't have. But not in a way to sound like it's mandatory, but maybe it's a preferred, to just kind of say that, you know, that's, it's preferred that they have, you know, more than just a school that has it. They actually have had some detailed experience in those areas.
From a sort of HR strategy standpoint, we're better off keeping our, particularly qualifications general, because what we don't want to have is a situation where we have a highly qualified candidate, and maybe that person is still in their PhD program at the end stage. This is just an example. And they're the, clearly the stand above candidate. If we say something like, "must have a doctorate," the person's out of the running. And if we bring them into the running, we have, will have violated labor law in such a way that, like, everybody else who didn't have a PhD should have been allowed farther into the search. So, I think we need to be careful about keeping things as general and in our court as much as possible. So, we say preferred wherever we can, rather than that, setting that, these kinds of things as a minimum qualification. Saying things like, "experience with ELL and special education is highly preferred," is much better than saying, "must have."
Right.
Because that really paints us into a corner.
Right.
The less we paint ourselves into a corner, the better. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with Mr. O'Neill's point, to Mr. Cruz's point. I certainly think under bullet point four, I mean, the qualifications that we're talking about, I mean, in some ways, these are all preferred. But even in this description, where we really want our preferences articulated is in the advertisement, which in the draft that we'll move on to next, that the special education background being preferred is articulated there. I think that, again, just like we could add a bullet point talking about the need to exercise excellent judgment with regard to staffing decisions and our qualifications, just like instructional leadership important is important, just like supervisory practice is important in school finances and business management, having an appreciation for the complexity and some experience dealing with special education issues and all the other. I mean, ELL, those are, those are certainly valid. I think we could incorporate, we could expand number four a little bit to talk about some of the other areas the superintendent needs to oversee. I would, I would say, I think, rather than try and get the language exact, which we will need to right now, I think we should make, sort of take notice of the fact that we're going to expand number four to include some of those points, and then come back to the table with a sort of beefed up job description.
So, let's look at the job description just for a second. And Ken might have a good point on this one, to just look at the paragraph, the way they're written, and make sure we don't have any concerns about how they're written. So, Ken, go ahead for a second.
Number three, a minimum of eight to 10 years. Wouldn't it just be minimum of eight years or a minimum of 10 years? I know now you have a minimum of eight to 10, so. Should we just, should we cross out of eight or to 10, like either one?
I mean.
The description here has is 10, so I don't know.
In the proposed advertisement, we have articulated it as 10. The proposed advertisement has been modeled after MASC advertisements that they've used in other school districts, so.
I'd rather just say minimum of 10, myself.
I tend to agree, that, that could be crossed out.
Even in the job description, it's like.
The job description, because not eight, eight to 10, I have two minimums.
I can honestly say that was brought up before by the leadership of the AEA about the number of years of teaching experience. So, that was a concern, but, alright, so let's go on the job description thing, and just look at the, we'll go through the first paragraph.
So, I'm sorry.
On the job description, not on, I'm sorry, not the job description, on the job advertisement. And we'll go over the first paragraph on it. "The Adbro School Committee is searching for a dedicated and innovative educational leader with exceptional communication and manageable ability to become the superintendent of the schools for the Adbro School District effective July 1st, 2013. The Adbro School System enrolling nearly 6,000 students across nine school buildings has demonstrated steady and substantial gains in student achievement. The School Committee is seeking a leader who will cultivate a culture of collaboration and empowerment amongst its students, staff, and families in order to sustain and build upon that progress." Now, that, that whole paragraph is almost like a statement of what the focus groups told us. So, does anybody have any question or concerns about that paragraph? Something that it shouldn't contain or something it should contain?
Yeah, I mean, I would, the, the goal of the first paragraph, obviously, is to send a signal to the superintendent at a very sort of big picture level of what are the needs of our district. There are some districts, turnaround districts, that need someone to, a superintendent to come in and sort of be a sort of revolutionary educational leader and turn everything upside down. There are others who need a superintendent to come in and make sure the lights come on every day on time. Our district, based on the evidence that we've collected thus far, is that we are, we don't fall into either one of those sort of really black and white camps. We're a district that's made a lot of progress, and we want to make sure that our candidate pool recognizes that, that we are a district that's made progress. But we're also a district in need of certain adjustments. And again, not an indictment on our current leadership or our current culture. We, again, progress speaks for itself, but there are, there are adjustments that need to be made, as they do from time to time, and the hope is to sort of incorporate that into that, that statement.
Brenda?
I think something maybe in there with like a new vision. I mean, we are, where we are, we're plateauing, but we need a new vision to move forward and to increase the gains. So, I don't know if that can be incorporated, like I said, we're just, we're going to have bullet points. Trying to see where I can either fit it in, something like that.
Kind of recommendation about putting something in the decision.
A vision, like a new, like a.
New vision.
We need like a, you know, moving forward to continue to go, and continue to move forward. To me, that's someone with, we need a new vision for Adbro to continue growth. We seem to be idling, you know what I mean?
Build upon that progress.
I mean, even like a sentence with a, with a, with a clear vision of the district in mind, or something like that?
The second sentence also has some good points.
Build upon that progress.
Really goes into detail about the large school system, special education, early childhood program, and comprehensive high school.
I think of a sentence talking, I mean, any superintendent who takes over will need, will be responsible for developing the future vision of the Adbro School District and working with all stakeholders to be collaboratively to bring that vision to fruition. So, I certainly think we could add a sentence that incorporates that idea. However, again, because we are a district that, there is a broad consensus, we've seen a significant amount of success. I think we want to be careful about pushing that point too strongly, because we don't want to send the message that we're a district looking to completely erase the chalkboard. I think there was a participant who talked about, if you picture on the chalkboard in one of our classrooms the first few sentences of a story that has been written. If the story had been a particularly unsuccessful one, we want someone to come in with an eraser and clean the chalkboard off. What we want is someone who's going to write the next three sentences of that story. And those, it will be that person's contribution, there's no question about that. This will be the new leader of the school system. But we don't want to send the message that we're in a school district that is in a more difficult spot than we are.
I think, oh, sorry, Ken, go ahead.
I'll take kind of a simplistic approach to kind of combine what both Dave and Brad said. "The School Committee is seeking a leader with vision." Maybe we could add those two words in and then just leave the rest alone, because then the last four words is to build upon that progress. So, we could add, with vision, add a little bit more for, per Brenda's request, but at the same time, still say that, "build upon the progress," add three more lines of chalkboard.
I, I like that idea a lot. The one, one piece I might add, I think a 21st century vision
I was just writing.
speaks to our, the well-identified need for our technology vision to expand, be improved, and be implemented away. So, I would, I, "The School Committee is seeking a leader with a 21st century, either vision or educational vision." I don't have a strong feeling about it. Is that, would that be?
Because that was a big point at the focus groups, they said regarding technology and that.
Because what I don't want to do, I don't want to put a motion out for every word that we want to put in. I want to just have it.
Alright.
At the end, we're going to vote on it, and that's what it's going to be.
But it sounds like that adjustment is, people are generally amenable to.
Yeah, I think we're just looking at the consensus right now.
Do you have a question, Bob?
No, I'm just thinking of stuff, and help to guide us through a new chapter on our journey to excellence, or something like that. That's what I had with the vision of the 21st century.
I'd like to see if we can put some type of visionary wording in there, if we can think of something that should be, fits with the paragraph, I should say.
I, I think that adding Mr. Parent's suggestion that, "The School Committee, in the last sentence of the first paragraph, the School Committee is seeking a leader with a 21st century vision who will cultivate a culture of collaboration and empowerment amongst students, staff, and families in order to sustain and build upon that progress," speaks to the need for this new superintendent to bring his or her own vision and to work collaboratively with the, our school district and all the stakeholders currently in the school district to blend that vision with the work and the progress that's been made by the people that are here. And I think, I do think, and again, 21st century part of it, I think, really does speak to the well-identified need of the technology.
Brenda, does that kind of alleviate some of the?
That's what I wrote, with a vision of the 21st century, because technology and things like that just bring us to the next level where we need to be as a district.
Okay, we're going to add that in there.
Okay.
Second paragraph, "A successful candidate will be expected to build constructive relationships with varied consistencies, appreciate the opportunity inherent in a diverse population of students, and exhibit a credible level of expertise in the complex components of a large school system, including special education, early childhood programming, and a comprehensive high school." I don't know if I like the word credible level of expertise, but that, that, that's an iffy word for me there. I don't know if I can come up with a better one right at this one second, but we'll let Ken speak first, and I'll work on it.
Oh, this guy nitpicky, but the ending, where he starts to listen to things, I think, think special education should go first, comprehensive high school goes second. I'm saying this because I'm thinking about how many children we have in each of those. English, early childhood program left, and I think we should do "and" English, English language. We should not list ELL. Besides that, credible is a tough word, so someone's got to wordsmith that one.
I don't, I, as, credible, as a person that came up with the word credible, I always first acknowledge, it's not an ideal choice. The, the issue that I think we're dealing with in the sentence, though, is, as Mr. O'Neill talked about earlier when we were talking about the qualifications, we do not want to suggest that we will only look at candidates who are foremost authorities on particular issues. We want a pool to be wider. On the other hand, we don't want to suggest that the, you know, anyone who read the Wikipedia page on special ed is good enough for us. So, we're, we're trying to find somewhere in the middle, and I am open to all suggestions with regard to exactly what level of expertise we need in the complex components of a large school system.
Something between high and low, not middle.
I'm looking something like exhibit.
How about highly credible?
Six-four, successful.
We haven't heard from Bill yet. We have from Bill, now we have from Brenda.
Just take credible out, put professional in.
There you go.
That should work. And you're all set.
Or successful.
I mean, it's just as vague as.
Successful level?
Successful, you know, professional, any of them, they're just as.
I actually think professional, you don't get to be at a professional level unless you've demonstrated a certain degree of success, so.
And yet, it's still a vague enough term that.
Yep.
It takes the Wikipedia types out of the long chair.
The WIC, the WIC candidates are no more. And I, I, that's an excellent.
So, we're looking at exhibit professional.
A professional level of expertise.
Successful. I like successful, but that's me.
It's not a term you can define, but, you know.
The only, I, I think professional, I, I agree that successful is the key in terms of what we want. I think professional does a better job of sort of encapsulating that idea.
Successful would mean that you've had a comprehensive school before.
Exactly. Which is exactly the problem, narrowing the pool, that, you know, if you're not, you know. But it's, it's, really what we're looking for is the appreciation for, for these issues and appreciation for the need for expertise in these issues.
I don't want to beat every paragraph to death.
Right, right.
Ah, come on, this is a good time.
If you can think of a better word, in the meantime, we'll revisit this one.
And I'm, I'm sorry, we are going to add, in addition to the three components that we are talking about, the three right now being special education, early childhood program, and the comprehensive high school, we are going to add something that speaks to the ELL services.
ELL.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to qualifications. "A license or eligibility to be licensed as a superintendent of the schools of Massachusetts." I think that's all, below me on that one. "A master's degree is required, a doctorate is preferred." I think we should eat that around a little bit.
Successfully.
Okay. "A minimum of 10 years of experience in education, including classroom and building-based leadership." "A vision that incorporates the critical role of emerging technologies in a 21st century school system."
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I know we've already incorporated the term 21st century at one point, but up and down the district, the overwhelming consensus is one of our chief objectives has to be the improvement of our, of the technology that we offer to our students. So, I think, I don't think having, I don't think it's redundant. I think it's necessary.
Oh, wait, when you go back to experience, the one that be above that, experience in education, including classroom and building-based leadership?
A minimum of 10 years, huh?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the job description, and they had central office, indoor administrative. I wonder if that was the reasoning or what. I'm just kind of, you know what I mean?
I know what you're, what exactly you're trying to say, but it doesn't say any central office, but then you see in education. Yeah, I think it's all encompassed in that. But yeah, I read the same way you did. Like, we're not looking for someone who's a man.
Well, I'm looking for someone, too, like, it doesn't say it in here, because again, alright, so, yeah, we do hit on the finance and stuff and whatever, okay.
Well, again, I think what we're going to have to do, we totally, I think, once we get this advertisement out, we might have to go and have a policy, you know, the next policy meeting or the one after that, and readjust our policy a little bit to make sure they are, you know, working in collaboration with each other.
Right.
Dave?
I think that's probably right, and I, I mean, these, there isn't a wide discrepancy here, so I don't think there are going to be any, there are any major, major changes that we'll need, but there, there certainly will be adjustments. With regard to specifying classroom and building-based leadership, if administrators who choose to move over into the central office way of life, there's a, sort of on that track, on that route to superintendency. So, I don't think by specifying that we, as a committee, appreciate building-based leadership and classroom experience, in addition to speaking to the priorities that we heard as part of the research phase, I don't think we are, we're not going to be eliminating one, because if you're open to being in the central administration way of life in education, then you're, you haven't shown the type of aversion that might lead someone not to apply to be a superintendent. So, all this, I think that all that sentence really does is speak to our recognition that even if you're living in the central office world, if you know what it's like to live in the world that hundreds of others do every day in a school system, that will add a certain level of value to the work that you do.
Any other questions or concerns after this point? Okay, next sentence, "Expertise and appreciation for issues related to school finance, special education, collective bargaining, diverse population, and governmental relations."
Yep, where it says, "expertise and/or appreciation for issues related to school finance." Yep, where it says expertise and or appreciation for issues related to school finance, I think it should be expertise and, I guess you could do and or, but I, I like the word success in there, success for issues related to school finance. You're successful, you put forward a budget, you know what I mean, like that's successful. It has the amount of staff, it ha, you know, I think that is important for the budget. That success needs to be in there. Appreciation for issues, I don't know if I'm, if I'm liking that one, but expertise, so I'm trying to think here, expertise.
Do we have any suggestions on that, Chris?
We could just say, you know, proven success, track record of success with issues related to, something like that.
Expertise and proven success.
No, no, you skip expertise, strike appreciation altogether and start with proven success.
And issues related, yeah, I think, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That make sense?
Dave, did you want to add something to that? You did have to hand it.
No, I think Mr. O'Neil's suggestion is a good one. Proven success.
The other thing that does is, is put them on notice that we want to know, we want data to support.
Right.
These kinds of statements.
Right. Success and special achievement, collective bargaining, like it worked, right.
Okay. We, we need proven success, we can't just have somebody, how great they are. We need to be able to check on that.
Outstanding communication skills that will effectively promote Attleboro's extraordinary progress in student achievement and the remarkable level of dedication exhibited by educators through the Attleboro school system. I personally really liked this in there only because, we heard that so many times on the focus group, about people talking about what they get from the frontline teachers is just an incredible experience that we have. And so that's definitely something we want, we're proud of and we want people to, we want them to know that that has to continue and that people are expected to continue that way. So does anybody else have any other questions about that line though? Okay, the next one we're skipping over for the time being. Application deadline, February 8, 2013. I can honestly say I had a little bit of problem with it only because I would like it shortened more. I, I really thought a month was going to be sufficient to, to, you know, keep this open. I only have, and I only say that for one reason, I just have concerns about if we do not get the quality of applicants that we want. We really put, we already put ourselves in a tight window and I shouldn't say put ourselves, it has just worked that way to make it inclusive as we wanted it to be. But the window is very tight and sometimes a, a week or 10 days could make a big difference. So I, I think I would just like to hear from different committee members about, if we are able to vote tonight on this advertisement and how we like to advertise it, we would be doing so next week. So how long do we want to keep it open? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I agree with you that a month is about the right timetable. February 8th would put it at five weeks. I don't have, I, I'm fine with February 8th or February 1st. Before February 1st, we're going to end up with less, we're going to, we're going to end up with less than a month. And my concern would be, the reason we want to keep it on a short timetable is we don't, if, in case we, obviously we want, if we have to repost and we want to expand the applicant pool, if we make the window that the, it's open and it's posted too narrow, too short, then we run the risk that we, we sort of do it to ourselves because we didn't keep it open long enough, not enough people applied and then the, sort of, it's a self fulfilling prophecy, it comes out. But it, logistically, if we sign off on this tonight, this can be posted in a week. There are, there are some issues we need, there's logistical things we got to get through. We actually have to get it to the publications, we got to, we've got to get it out there. Some of them, if it's hard copy publications, they have to actually have to be published. But realistically, we can get this thing posted in a week. February 1st would put it at, well, I guess, when I say five weeks, you kind of subtract the holiday week because that's a sort of a non-starter in terms of anyone doing anything other than obviously celebrating the holidays. But, you know, we, we fast forward a week to February 1st, that is a month, I think that's, I think that's fine. I'm also fine with February 8th, but I think, I think we want to keep it at one of those two.
I thought January 31st, cut it off there and then there you go.
I think February 1st is a Monday.
No, it's a.
It's a Friday?
This is a Friday.
So I, then I think that would.
I think at the end of the month then.
It's a February 4th, come on, it's a Monday.
I have no problem with that either, but I think it's, it's.
I said the end of January, that would be me, January 31st. January or February 1st.
The 31st falls on what day?
Thursday. So it's one of those.
It should be a Monday or Friday.
I would do that, we need to move it up because if we do have to go back out, I just think that, you know what I mean? If we do have to go back out, like you said, you never know, you're pushing it because it would be here that we would end it the first February 8th. And like you said, if you had, you know what I mean? So it does need to be pushed up, whether it's a week.
My only suggestion was like that, like, like a week, just a week. Only what Dave said, when I say a month, I think is substantial enough time, but yes, obviously, you know, the whole Christmas thing, you know, you lose that whole time. Nobody's not going to be focused, I believe, at that time on reading our advertisements.
Let's be rapid up.
Be focused on family. As a matter of fact, if they're that focused on getting a new job and not on their family, we would rather have them not apply anyway.
Very good, a very good point. I, I think, I think to Mr. Parent's point though, I think it's either Friday the 1st or Monday the 4th and I don't think it matters which.
Go with the February, I like February 1st, the Friday.
Do we have any concerns about pushing it up for February 1st?
That's fine.
You getting all this, right, Drew? Okay, we have appointment date, mid to late April 2013. I think we've already basically stated that as a committee, that was our objective. Starting date, yes, July 1st, 2013. Please submit, okay, the application, resume and or current, what's that one?
Curriculum data.
Transcripts detailing all post-secondary degrees, three letters of recommendation, personal statements, please describe your short-term and long-term goals for the Attleboro School District if you're to become the superintendent of schools. And, and this is why it's actually important to do this focus group and that we're going to have a consent document. I mean, because everybody that's ever came here before, I think as all this committee knows, they've all been on the search group since they've been on this, on this committee. That's kind of standard procedure to ask them to talk about Attleboro, incorporate Attleboro in a thing and they, they run right for our website, obviously, and they start looking up all this stuff. So it gives them a good thing to base their letter on.
I have a question, Mike.
Okay, we have applied to.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
I know the starting date is July 1st, did we ever think of maybe shadowing for, I don't know, a couple of weeks, a month? I mean, I know a lot of districts do that, shadowing instead of just one out, one in. Like, even if it's two weeks, I don't know, I'm just saying.
I.
I don't know.
Don't know if we even have the financial means.
To even.
To do that.
Yeah.
My, the word I've received and I've spread this to the committee, census process started. Dr. Durkin said that she was going to stay here to the end of her contract, so that is June 30th.
June 30th, right, right.
I don't know if we have the finances to even, I realize what you're saying, it's a great point.
I mean, I know a lot of districts do it, so I'm just kind of, I looked into that.
No, I mean, that's a committee decision, don't get me wrong.
But I mean, we can, like you said, financially, I mean, we can look into, I don't know, I just think it, if it is possible, I mean, even if it's a couple of weeks, I think it's important, but if it's not financially feasible, then there's nothing we can do. So I, I think that is something that maybe we can, can we look at? I mean, I don't want to hold up everything, but I'm just saying, you know what I mean?
Yes, go ahead, Dave, and then Chris was up.
Dave's probably going to say what I'm thinking anyway.
Well, we'll find out, who knows?
Lay it down, man.
I was, I, I think that at a later date, we're definitely going to have to talk about exactly how we're going to execute that transition, both in terms of what's feasible from a financial standpoint and what organizationally we need in the school district. One of the, we talked a lot about, and a lot of the groups that we talked to would make the point that, you know, it's nice that you're hearing what we're saying in terms of what we expect to have to confront in the coming years, but the people they really want to make that presentation to, the people they really want to articulate those concerns to, is the individual taking over as superintendent. So I certainly could envision it, particularly if we achieve our goal of making the appointment in mid to late April, that's a two-month window where we'll, before they have been able to develop a transition process, sort of a phase five, if you will, of the process that talks about giving, I would envision it being, each building and each program, each office department, whatever, has the opportunity to figure out what is the piece of information that, now that we have the individual, this is the person who's going to be your boss, what is the information you need to make sure that that person knows when he or she starts on July 1st? I think it's a very important point. I don't, I don't think we need it in our advertisement, but I think we definitely need, it's something we need to consider down the road. Was I, was I right?
You were close. One of the things I was going to say is, rather than get bogged down and try not figure out transition now, one of the things I imagine we could do at a later date is come up with a, an addendum to whatever contract we're doing to say, starting on June 1st, we would prefer, you know, you know, we have somebody in hand, we can present some kind of addendum or a, like a, a separate contract to discuss the idea of transition and transition time. Because that's, that's going to come down to money to a certain extent. We don't know where we're going to be when we get to, we don't know that now, how much, how much of that money we're going to have in hand in June. So, so I think we're safer saying, keeping that question off this page for now and addressing that at a later date in its own sort of separate contractual arrangement.
I was very close.
You, you were very close, that's what I said.
Brenda?
I mean, again, advertising, that may be the right route to go, but I'm just saying, if someone is applying and whether their school district knows they're applying and they realize that, well, we have this person maybe to the end of June, if they get the job, will they not be available maybe to shadow? I don't know, does that?
Well, I think if, if you really look at the date too, when we say mid-April, I, I think if, if this person is a current superintendent or administrator in another district, they're probably going to have a 90-day thing in their contract anyways, that they have to give 90 days notice to their current district. So that puts it right to July. That's what I'm saying.
To the end of July, could be.
Well, not really.
Three months?
Go ahead.
I mean, the other thing we have to keep in mind is that a, a person applying for a position of this magnitude, this isn't just any other job that you apply for and then you're going to start that on July 1st. I mean, a person who is becoming a candidate to be the superintendent of schools in Attleboro has made a decision that his or her life is going to be largely defined by this job and this school district for several years. And so I think, you know, the funding issues aside, if that person is appointed superintendent, is the superintendent designee at that point, he or she is going to be spending time in some way, one way or another, preparing to take over this school district. I mean, this is a major transition in the person's life, never mind for the school district. So I, I'm comfortable that that transition will, that that, you know, we'll find a way to make that work.
Ken?
Again, we could iron out possible shadowing if we even have the time to do it later, all the funds. But when we say shadow, we do mean shadowing principals, maybe shadowing Tom, maybe shadow, shadowing Dave, right?
I think it's a very comprehensive situation where every piece of the school district, we sort of break down and say, what do you need to do to help this person become your boss? And that's something that will happen over May and June. Certainly, Mr. Sawyer, Mr. Rose.
Exactly right, any, any professional is going to want to.
Is that what you would think of Brenda for shadowing, somebody that?
Oh yeah, they would, yeah, to see what each individual and whatever, however they operate stuff. Either way, yeah. Isn't that, that's what the superintendent does.
Right, well, no, it's a very valid point. I mean, these schools don't close on June 30th.
Right, right.
That's what a lot of people think.
Or any, or any other day for them.
Right. All right, just mention the shadowing that I had, yep, that's mine.
Okay. So now we have the last spot, applied to superintendent search, care of the chairman of the, which they can utilize the search site that Jonathan has set up for us.
The email, who, who search at attlebrowschools.com, that's something you'll be taking care of?
At this point in time right now, it's just me and Jonathan, okay, that have that. Okay, Jonathan set it up for this committee, there's nothing on it right now.
Right.
We haven't done anything. Yes, it would be, only because it's going to have confidential information on it.
Right.
Very careful with that, that's all. Go ahead.
For the advertisement here, we, I know, I'm trying to look through here, we didn't put anything really about the curriculum. Like, should anything be in here about our cur, you know, the curriculum, the, you know, the, the math standards, you know what I mean, like all that? I know we, I'm just trying to look here.
I certainly think that's an area that could be added to the proven success in bullet point. Curriculum development.
Standards or some, like what we get, what we do now.
It's a, it's, it, we certainly could add that, I mean, the one issue is, I mean, it's, the sentence is meant to be sort of all encompassing, as frankly as the entire advertisement, again, just we're trying to.
Do we have that?
As thorough as possible, but I don't think there would be any issue in adding curriculum, curriculum development to, to that, it's just that, you know, it's almost like the more inclusive you try to be, to some degree, you, it just kind of, everything sort of cancels each other out. Again, it's, what you're asking is someone who's demonstrated success in everything that public education entails.
And like I said, I'm, I'm just putting it out there, I mean, I just.
That's what we're trying to get accomplished. Where, where would we put that curriculum development, into the qualifications or just up in the paragraph as a general vision?
Qualification.
And that, the qualitative, the proven success, which originally was expertise and or appreciation for, it would just be proven success in, in addition to school finance and special education and collective bargaining and diverse populations and developing world peace and governmental relations and curriculum development, we could just, we could add that, that point. Speaks to that other aspect of the job.
Does that alleviate the concern, Brenda?
Yeah, I just thought it should be in the curriculum.
Do we, do we want to elaborate, elaborate a little bit more on like grant success? We get a lot of grants, so I don't know if we want to just think that that's under finance or if.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different parts of finance.
I know now we're very strong with our grants and that would be something if we started on any of those.
Okay, so aside from the changes that we wanted to put into it and the compensation part, which we'll be dealing with later, does anybody, I think we all pretty well think the advertisement would look pretty good. I would have been agreed upon.
Who would not apply?
Now that we've torn it and ripped it all apart.
Who would not apply for this job?
That's right.
Mr. Tremick?
Yes, good.
Just to detail some of the adjustments that we're going to make based on the committee's comments tonight, we're going to add in the first paragraph, the 21st century vision that we anticipate our candidate will employ. In the second paragraph, we're going to change credible level of expertise to professional level of expertise and in the areas where we enumerate the areas in which we expect this person to have a professional level of expertise, we're going to add ELL services. We're going to, in the, under the qualifications, strike expertise and or appreciation for and change to proven success in, and we're going to add curriculum development as another area in which we hope this person will have proven success in. The application deadline will change from February 8th to February 1st and that will, those are the changes that we'll make to this document that's before the committee.
And I wrote just for the, for the job description is we should do some type of review in a policy meeting sometime in January, February, just to make sure they consist with each other. Okay, so, we actually, we can't vote on that one yet anyways, we haven't fulfilled the whole requirements of it. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next piece of paper.
With regard to the vote on the advertisement, if we're going to get this posted, just based on our schedule, I think we'd want to, if there are going to be any objections, they should be stated now, or I would say, we'd vote to approve pending those changes that we just discussed. That way we can, because it's, we're going to have to.
You can make the motion.
I'll make a motion that this Attleboro School Committee approve the advertisement for the position of superintendent of schools effective July 1st, 2013, pending the changes that were discussed tonight.
Discussion, Ken?
Do we have to put something in the motion bump pending this decision of conversation as well? Or is that not going?
I said pending the discussion tonight, so that discussion will take place tonight as well.
Just make sure that all the changes are implemented and then too.
We should cross them all out.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stand? Motion passed. Motion passed. Moving on to our next piece, advertising of the position. Just in front of us is a break, breakdown, again, most of this is from the MASC recommendations. As was stated earlier, there is, um, plenty of other things, it's on the shot right there, but it's not on, on the paper. There's been, uh, I've got many recommendations for the committee to use free websites, uh, some by teachers' association, and some by, uh, other school committees out of, but out there. So I think there's a rash of advertising things out there that we intend on utilizing every one of those. This is just the ones that really, um, have a, some type of, uh, financial impact on our budget. So just going over it quickly, as Dave's got it up there, we got School Spring, which is an online version, that's free, that's highly recommended. Education Week, uh, thirty-six per year online advertisement.
Thirty-six per year is, I, as my understanding, uh, from my conversation with Mr. Kutter, is thirty, is thirty-six hard copies produced per year? Guessing that's every other week, and then maybe a little bit often, more often. I'm not exactly sure that, what their calendar is, but, well, actually, it's Education Week, so I suspect they're publishing less in the summertime. That would make sense. And then there's obviously the, the online edition, so, um, the column that says MASC position, which is a little clearer frankly, up on the, on the screen right now than it is in the, the handout in front of you, because the, on the screen does not include all of the free options. The free options, as the chairman said, we're not gonna turn down free option. There are five, um, advertising options with, with financial implications, which are really the decision, uh, that the, the school committee needs to make. I've classed, on this handout, um, MASC does not have a, an official classification for their recommendation in terms of highly recommend, recommend, neutral. That's my characterization of what Glenn said, basically. The, as you can see on the chart, Education Week, he, they, they do say that there's a lot of value in that. In fact, he said that to us when we, when he met, um, on October first. The MAS, I'm, September twenty-fifth, sorry. The MASC mailing list is essentially a distribution list that the school committee associates, association maintains. It's educational professionals, it's professional organizations, it's a number of other organizations that essentially, if you had a job advertisement of this kind, you'd like it to be in front of. The six hundred dollars is essentially the postage amount, it's a, it's a mass mailing, but, um, they say that there's some value in that. The third one, miscellaneous media outlets, that is essentially, um, what MASC classifies as minority media opportunities. There are African-American publications, uh, El Mundo, which is a, a Spanish-speaking publication, Amsterdam News, which is, I, I think, an African-American publication, uh, El Corado, which, I probably just butchered that, I apologize, which is a New York-based Spanish publication, and a number of others. They all range in the eleven-hundred, I'm sorry, nineteen-hundred-dollar range, maybe a few, a little bit less. He didn't really have a strong position on that, he just said, this is another option that school districts sometimes exercise. Uh, the Boston Globe, again, as he, when he met with us on September twenty-fifth, um, he did recommend against that. That's, it's a, it's a committee determination. And then the Sun Chronicle, uh, he's, uh, MASC was of the view that if you have a local newspaper, that it's worth advertising in the local newspaper in one Sunday edition. I, I get the sense that that's more for sort of communal, community news than it is in terms of, although not to suggest that there aren't superintendent candidates that might not read the Sun Chronicle, I'm sure that there are, although, Sun Chronicle representative seems to be drifting off a little bit there, but, um, so, it's an option, it's a six hundred and ninety-dollar option that includes one Sunday publication, uh, one publication in a num-, they're sister newspapers, and, uh, an online presence at rijobs.com, which is a, a website that Sun Chronicle has a, um, a connect, a, a relationship with. So, that's what you get for the six hundred and ninety dollars, and again, that, it's, it's based, that's MASC's, uh, recommendation.
And it goes to what, the Foxborough Reporter on Thursdays and stuff?
The weekly publications, the North Attleboro one, I think there's the Foxborough one.
Reporter, yep.
I think the Attleboro Sun would be included, so, again, I would just say, if we're gonna discuss, I don't have strong views on this, uh, one way or the other. I think, um, I think, except for, Ed- Education Weekly was a pretty strong recommendation. He said that, that there are candidates that will, uh, find out about that. So that eighteen-hundred-dollar one is a pretty strong recommendation. Aside from that, it's, you know, it's the committee's decision, whatever people feel like we wanna do.
Right, so now that we know what the financial obligations would be, we have to get a, a feeling whether or not that, you know, he did say, Glenn did say that when he was here, that, uh, they do not feel you get your money's worth going out in the Boston Globe, four thousand dollars, but we also, uh, as a committee, wanna make sure that we're reaching as far, reaching as an audience as we can, and we want, we don't wanna miss anybody, so, uh, we'll take concerns about those financial questions right now, Ken?
Well, first of all, I don't think free, um, I obviously don't think we'd do. Could you just go back and give a little bit more on the postage option?
Sure.
I just think that mailers, uh, not the best, but maybe they had a good reason for it.
Yeah, no, and, uh, I would not, the cost is six hundred dollars, the cost is for the postage. I believe, um, it would work in conjunction with the MASC as the local affiliate of the National School Board Association. The organizations, in terms of who would receive that? Professional organizations, certainly, I suspect some graduate schools, um, for posting in their arenas. I can't say that he, he gave a whole lot more specifics, and I essentially asked the same question. Part of why I don't, I didn't feel really strongly about the need to exercise this option, but it i- it was, uh, it was recommended, I think, because the cost is relatively low, and the number of individuals who would be in receipt of the, um, of the advertisement would go. And I think there are, there are newsletters that that, uh, is part of that charge, it would be included with, who would go to, uh, uh, other school districts, administrative offices, professionals, uh, who are part of the organization, who are on, who wanna be on the mailing list, so they get notices of this nature. That's essentially who the market would be.
Any other questions or concerns about the advertising prices or preferences to either utilize all avenues, delete certain avenues, or add?
That might be the, I mean, maybe, the question might, to the group might be, is there anyone, is there one anyone wants to eliminate? And then we'll go from there.
I'm iffy on the Boston Globe, we didn't really have a lot of success. Didn't we advertise in that with a lot of our other, um, vacancies when we did? And we didn't really have a good success rate for that. I like all the other ones, I think, honestly, that postage one. So, um, minority media outlets, I don't know, honestly, I don't know what that is really. If that, I, I don't know, I would like more, yeah, I don't know if that would be beneficial.
I think Ken was first, Ken?
I, I agree with, uh, Brenda, about four thousand's a little too much to buy school. I think the New York Times would probably be even more money, and the Boston Globe would be all about the same. I don't, I would wanna know the price, but I don't think that might be worth it. And as far as minority media outlets, um, I think anyone who's looking to be a superintendent would go through any of the avenues already listed here. To me, I'm, in other words, the dollars I'm looking at is eighteen for education, postage, and the Sun Chronicle.
Yep.
All thirty-one hundred.
I, I agree with Mr. Parent.
Yep.
That, that was the short list I had.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think Glenn made it quite clear during his presentation, that this is, it's a very specialized field, we all know that. And when you're specialized fields, they go to specialized places to find a job. They usually do not just pick up a copy of the Phoenix and decide to look in there for a superintendent fit, so, um, I'm just saying, that, I'm not trying to cut them down, hopefully, it's just the reality of the situation. So what I'm hearing is, is Education Week, this, so, so we, we were kind of in agreement, would we wanna go out in Education Week?
Could it, this is one last point, these are, uh, Education Week and the mass mailing list are approximate, are estimates given by MASC. I suspect they're literally within a few dollars, um, but, the mailing, if, if the mailing list, the ma-, easily could come to like six hundred and forty-two dollars, it wouldn't shock me, I don't, I don't know, but that, that was the ballpark figure, so...
What we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do, we're not, when we vote on this, we're not gonna vote on it to the penny.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that...
We made that mistake earlier during the sor days, and, uh, we're not gonna do that again. We will, we'll have a, a little larger pool than what we need, just to make sure that all the finances are covered. So the Education Weekly is something that we want to go with, all the other stuff is online and free, and like I said, I have a pretty extensive, uh, list at home, uh, that's been given to me by educators, and we're gonna put it on every one of them. And once I, once we get a finalized list of where it's going online, every committee member will receive that list of exactly where they are. So we have MASC mailing list and the Education Week, we're gonna utilize both of those?
And I think this, there was, uh...
In the Sun Chronicle.
The Sun Chronicle.
I had Sun Chronicle, the mailing list, and we're going with Education Week.
Yep.
And obviously all the others, because they're free.
Right, and we didn't wanna use the minority media outlets or the Globe.
Boston Globe, right.
And we did wanna use the Sun, utilize the Sun Chronicle.
In New York Times, I don't think either. I thought, yeah, the Sun Chronicle.
Sun Chronicle, yes. Okay.
Um, do you want a motion?
I just wanted to make sure there's no more questions or concerns before we do so. Yes, please, make them up.
Make a motion that the advertisement for the position of superintendent of schools for the Attleboro School District, effective July first, two thousand and thirteen, be, that we post that in the following publications, uh, at the appropriate cost. Education Week, uh, through the Masters Association of School Committee mailing distribution list, and in the Sun Chronicle, in addition to, um, all free outlets that we are able to obtain.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stand? Okay, at this time, I am going to, first, that we are going to enter into executive session for the purpose of bargaining strategy with non-union personnel. For that, I need to take a roll call vote, Mr. O'Neill? Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Patato?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler, yes?
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Zito?
Yes.
We will not be convening an open session.